How do we actually create that, that end result of fairness?
Yeah, I think we start with only creating rules that we actually need, for one, and enforcing those rules that we do need. So what has happened is we have a 230-page document, which has, like I said, does have some good bits in it, but it also has a lot of things that we don't necessarily need. And then there are parts, I believe it was you who spoke with one of the commissioners, saying, well, why do we even have this thing in here about limiting how people can live in campers? And the commissioner replied to you, well, do you see us enforcing it? And so for things like that, I'm like, they're not enforcing it. We spoke multiple times, like, we don't want that rule here in our county. So why do we have it? Why does it have to be part of our county regulations when we don't want it and it's not enforced anyway?
Yeah.
And it could be enforced in the future is the issue.
I'm here with Nico Wolf, and Nico's running for county commissioner here in Delta County. Nico, it's so good to have you here.
Good morning, Brandon. It's great to be here. Thank you for inviting me.
So you're running for county commissioner. So what prompted you to, to apply for that role?
The main factor, I would say, is other people asking me to do it. So fundamentally, I am a big believer in personal freedom, private property rights, and a representative government that actually listens to and serves the people. I'm here, like many folks, and I have a simple goal in life, to, to live a quiet life in the woods and raise my kids in this beautiful place, raise dairy goats, build structures without having to ask the government permission. And a lot of people cherish that kind of freedom that's here. And it came just almost two years ago. I learned that the county had put zoning onto unincorporated county properties without bothering to notify landowners. And they also put a land use code, put new rules on those properties, again, without bothering to notify people. And I caught wind of this when they were about to do a second update on it. So I was a lucky guy with a well-timed snow day, so I got to show up and stand up and speak out. And pretty soon, we had hundreds of folks speaking out. And I learned soon that it doesn't matter how many people show up, the government didn't really seem to want to listen to the people's voice. So we, people showed up at meetings of the Board of County Commissioners with the Planning Commission to very well-attended public hearings regarding the land use code. And it, they, they would make some token gestures to appease us, but ultimately, it didn't matter what people said. Those two public hearings had predetermined outcomes. And it, it just got to the point where we needed some new voices in, in our government. So I'm doing that to stand up and speak out for other people.
So it's from an overall desire for the people to be represented in the process that's happening at the county level?
Yes. Yeah, it is that. It's, I'd rather not be running for office. I'd rather be building a new bedroom for my children right now. But this is really important. And I've got a lot of folks, I speak for a lot of people, and a lot of folks have asked me to speak for them. And this is just a continuation of, of offering to serve, to, to represent people.
So what do you feel is at stake for Delta County? And what happens if we don't do anything and we, we just let things go on as they are?
So what's happening with adding more regulations to our life is regulation for the sake of regulation just leads to more regulation. And right now, it doesn't, it doesn't matter that these regulations go unenforced.
Well, so there's an overall philosophy here that you disagree with, which is maybe you don't see how the regulations that are being proposed are serving the public.
Right. There are, okay, to be fair, I'm not anti-regulation. A lot of the folks who are standing up were not anti-regulation. We want smart regulations.
One of the other things that I saw during the hearings, and I was there recording things, people would be dismissed based on the arguments of a few outliers, but there were some really core arguments that were never addressed and were very specific. You know, there, there was organizations like the Delta County Coalition that was itemizing point by point. You, you did this too, Eli Wolf, or Eli Walcott, sorry, mixed your names. Many people came in and itemized exactly what their issues were with the code. And we weren't getting addressment to those issues.
Right, right. And this is after they asked for specifics. At the first public hearing, I delivered them, I think it was 11 or 14 pages of specific, specific items, and I never received a reply to that. You know, they demanded specifics and didn't give it to us.
But what does that mean in terms of actual consequences? You know, if, if person's a farmer in Delta County, or, you know, let's say they're running Airbnb, or they're running agrotourism, or people find all kinds of creative ways to make ends meet here. How does it actually impact the person when land use codes change?
Well, the, the primary issue was a lack of notification. So you can't put rules on, onto somebody's property and not let them know that they now have new rules. I mean, the person who told me about it, found out about it when they got a notice of violation in the mail that says you're in violation of this land use code that you know nothing about. So it's disingenuous to implement rules on people without even informing them that they now exist, for one. And two, very few people are able to read the whole thing and...
And much less understand it.
Much less understand it, correct. So, so to be fair, there are some good aspects of it. There are some good parts that we can keep, but overall, it's just too broad. It's overreaching. And it was attempting to, to solve individual problems by creating blanket solutions. I heard...
What are some of the valid things that you think they're addressing that, you know, we, we do actually need improvement in those areas?
Well, I think we definitely need subdivision guidelines for when, you know, when people want to do, do a, you know, rather large development idea. I think we need good, good guidelines in that sense. We need to know, and the other problem, though, the zoning has been placed across all the, all the county fairly arbitrarily in saying, okay, well, you're now in this zone, so you can do these things or not do these things. Whereas we need to take a broader view of the future in terms of zoning and say, okay, well, what kind of industry do we want to attract? Are we going to have another solar farm come along? What are some of the big industry, more industrial, high-impact activities that we would like to see here or that we anticipate being here? And instead of just saying, okay, well, if it's in this zone, it can be that, but look at the map, look at the county and say, where would this really fit in here? And take the opportunity to say, okay, well, we can welcome this industry here, or we can welcome another solar farm in this area. It wouldn't have a bad impact on other people or agricultural land. So I think a bigger picture approach to that, and then stepping away from the little guys, from residential properties, from agricultural properties where, as you said, you know, we do what we need to do to get by. And to have to get a permit to do this or that when you're just doing what you have to do to keep your small farm going, to keep your family fed, it's a little too much.
Yeah, the subdivision rules are a good example of, we saw one case with Stanley and Evelina where that was actually applied to their property, which, from a common sense standpoint, they have three parcels. It's a, it's a land cooperative, and they have three parcels on their property. I, I just don't see any way that that could rationally be considered a subdivision or could fall under the same set of rules.
Right, right. Because in that particular instance, it's not a subdivision. It's three different families, three different households buying into the same property and the same cooperative operation. So it's not that the, the property is divided into three specific parts. It's there are three zones, as it were, three parts carved out of that larger property that says, okay, here's a home site, home site, and home site. And we're going to work together to, to farm this place.
So I guess my point there is like, there's some really surprising applications. You, you might read the code and, and the Planning Commission or the commissioners might tell you on the surface, like, oh, we intend to use it this way. But then when you see the actual application, it's like, whoa, I wasn't expecting that.
Right, right. And then alternatively, you've got this checklist now of things. And I have seen, I'm not going to name any names here, but I've seen the process go through where a rather large operation is going through the, the planning application process. And it goes through the Planning Commission with eight or nine conditions to be met in the future at some point. And then it goes to the commissioners. And it still requires eight or nine conditions to be met, even though primary ingredients such as water have not been successfully acquired. So at that point, it's like, why bother having this if you don't even have to meet the standards that it sets? So it's...
So it sounds like we're wanting standards to be applied fairly and consistency, consistently. But there's some nuance in like, how to define that and, you know, how to approach the rule creation process and the, and the rule enforcement process. How do we actually create that, that end result of fairness?
Yeah, I think we start with only creating rules that we actually need, for one, and enforcing those rules that we do need. So what has happened is we have a 230-page document, which has, like I said, does have some good bits in it, but it also has a lot of things that we don't necessarily need. And then there are parts, I believe it was you who spoke with one of the commissioners, saying, well, why do we even have this thing in here about limiting how people can live in campers? And the commissioner replied to you, well, do you see us enforcing it? And so for things like that, I'm like, they're not enforcing it. We, we spoke multiple times, like, we don't want that rule here in our county. So why do we have it? Why does it have to be part of our county regulations when we don't want it and it's not enforced anyway?
Yeah.
And it could be enforced in the future is the issue.
Yeah, right. It's, eventually, the rules that we have in place will shape what's going on on the ground. Yeah. Whether we're enforcing it right at this moment or not. The threat is there. And, you know, people, people don't want to live in, you know, threat of being evicted or, you know, fear that they're in violation of, of something.
Exactly, exactly. That's the thing. And there's still a lot of folks who do live in a camper or similar structure, and they don't know what's going on because they don't want to know. They want to mind their own business and live their own life. And now they are become in, you know, technically in violation of a code.
So what's the character of Delta County that we're looking, or that you're looking to preserve here? What, what do you see as valuable and worth protecting?
There is a unique sense of freedom that characterizes this place. It is, it is unique in the country. I mean, I grew up all over the country as an Air Force kid. And I've, I've seen a lot of places. But there's something just very unique about Delta County, both in the, the character of its geography and the, the character of its people. And there's, it still maintains quite a bit of that pioneer spirit of building your own life. And we're, we're still famous for not having building codes in the unincorporated parts of the county. And I am having lots of conversations about this topic. There's still a lot of folks who are vehemently against it. And then there's folks like realtors who, well, we want something, you know? But to be able to build your own shelter without asking the government permission is such a wonderful validation of freedom. Like, this is what America is about, is to, to be able to build your own life. So, so that quality comes in. And there's so many folks here who, who are fiercely independent, but not to the extent of being misanthropic, you know? Or there are people who like to be hermits and be out in the woods. But then when they are out with people, they're a wonderful face in the community and a friend to, to many. So I'm fighting for that. And just the, the country way of life that is here, it's, it's, you know, the last hundred years has seen quite a bit of change here in the county, I mean, in the whole country. But our agricultural economy is the core of what we are here. And we need to preserve that. And at this point, I think we need to look not just, you know, to get this land use code done right now and let it be done and it's a living document. We can change it again next year. I think it's time to look 100 years down the road, to look at, to, to come from that perspective of what we're doing now, how is that going to benefit the seventh generation to come? You know, 100 years down the road, for me, that would be my, my great-great-grandchild. And what kind of life do they get here? I would like to see them have the same opportunities we have here, have the same vistas, the same affordability. I mean, historically, Delta County has been an affordable place to live. And that is beginning to change for various reasons. So we need to look at how we can, how we can sustain our county so that our children and their children can afford to be here and that they want to stay here. They don't want to leave necessarily.
So what do you feel the keys are to creating a economy and a, a place here that actually provides opportunity and, and people are excited to stay here? Especially young people?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I think an essential key is affordability of housing. You know, for, I know a lot of folks who pay ridiculous amounts in rent every month, and they're getting, gaining equity in that. A lot of folks find it hard to buy a home just because property prices have gone, have gone out, out the roof. So we need to look...
But are those things just inevitable? You know, it, it seems like there's a, in the, in the common dialogue, there's just sort of a, you know, giving in to that being inevitable.
Well, I don't, I don't like to think it's inevitable. Because, you know, when, when people get priced out of here, where are they going to go?
What, what could we do at the county planning level to have an impact on that?
Well, again, that goes, goes kind of to the, the zoning idea. But I think it's more than just the planning level. So first, first, on the planning level, it's kind of a different topic. But we used to have area planning committees. And these were, these were neighborhood planning committees that were based on the watersheds of the county. So the watershed was the locality, there was the area. And when new developments of, you know, of significant nature were to come, then the area planning committee, the APC, gets together and they review it. And they, they bring the neighborhood together, and the neighbors meet. And that, at that level, the issues would get worked out. Like, what are the problems here? What are the impacts? What are the solutions? How can we have a win-win here? And so once it's worked out on the area planning committee level, then it would go down to the county level. And then the, the county planning department will receive a plan that's already has the problem worked out. And so it makes it much easier for it to go forward from there. So I think, I think that's part of it, that we should return planning to begin at the watershed level, at the more local level, and, and move forward from there.
I know one of the problems they had with those area planning committees was the process just took, it, it could take a while. It could take a couple of weeks, if I'm not misstating. And it required people going on, onsite to these different locations, which is, there's pluses and minuses of that. Like, the plus side is, well, yeah, you have to go on, onsite because, you know, you're, you're simply not going to get the same level of information otherwise. But I can, I can also understand the desire to streamline. And especially as the population grows in the county, it might not be feasible to use some of those same methods.
Well, one, I, I heard, okay, well, it takes an extra month to do it. Well, if you look at something, if the project's going to be around for decades, what's another month to make sure we do it as well as we can at the, at the beginning? So I mean, that, I think that's a poor excuse. The, the most significant thing that I heard of why they went away is that the people on them weren't showing up. So I think now, enough people want to participate right now that I think we can reinstitute those APCs and let our planning begin at the local level again. The current process is you submit a, a application to the county. Then the county reaches out to the neighborhood and invites your neighbors to a meeting. It's kind of backwards. It's, I just make so much more sense to start at home and then, and grow from there.
So given, given that you're running on the basis that people should have more representation in, in this process, what's your way of reaching out to the population and, and actually including them in, in some way and measuring like what it is they want and need at the county level?
Well, just to be more, more connected, I mean, I'm going to start from where I am now. And I'm just, I'm a member of this community. I'm a working man. I'm, I'm in the same position many other people are of doing what I have to do to get there. So I would just maintain a connection with people. I'd like to do, you know, weekly video updates of what's going on and just actively invite people to do things. And maybe, one, one thing that would be helpful is currently our Board of County Commissioners meetings are on first and third Tuesdays of a month at 8:30 in the morning in Delta. So to go to those meetings, most people have to take time off work. And it would be nice to have some of those meetings, especially those that have more impact on people, where constituent time would be more valuable, to have them in the evening occasionally and also to switch it up, do them in Hotchkiss sometime so other people can have access to it. So just make, make government more accessible to people, to, to be present in the community, I think, would be important.
Of course, there's, there's three different constituencies. And you're, you're running for the, are they called constituencies?
The districts.
Districts of, of Delta County? And you're running for what is essentially the North Fork area? And Cedar Ridge is a separate area, and then the Delta is a separate area, right?
Yeah. So we're, we're in District Three here, which is the east end of the county. It involves North Fork Valley, so Peonian, Hotchkiss, Crawford, and most of Redlands Mesa. And then Cedar Ridge is District Two, and that's Cedar Ridge and Orchard City, down through Austin. And District One is Delta City and surrounding areas, so the west end of the county.
And so even though you're running for, to, to represent the North Fork area, you actually have to get the votes of the entire county?
This is true.
Yeah. Which is kind of an interesting just way that our county works.
Yeah. So we have three commissioners which are voted on at large, which means the whole county votes for all three of them. And we do have the opportunity to vote to change that. And I would like to change that because the three districts, though they're based on, on population and try to be as even as they are, the three districts are very different, both topographically and culturally, and also in terms of our water, like where it comes from and how much we have, et cetera. So I think it would be really beneficial if each district voted only for their own commissioner, just so we have a more representative government on the local level.
But in the meantime...
But in the meantime, in the meantime, I'm here for all of Delta County.
What do you feel, what do you feel, what issues do you feel like unite the people in, in Delta County?
Well, land use code is one. It is one. There are, there are people who are vehemently for it, very few though. So...
Well, and when you say for it, do you mean for the changes that are being implemented? Like, we've had a land use code for a long time, right?
Three years. The, the land use code was implemented in 2021, but still a lot of folks did not know about that until 2024.
Wasn't there a land use code before that?
There wasn't a code per se. There was a gathering of, there's a few different regulations and ordinances that were, you know, selectively used. We had a master plan, a community master plan was put together in 2018. And that was an update to one that was worked on from 1994 to about 1997. And that previous master plan was 14 pages, a very concise, simple language of, here's what we, what we see. And then the 2018 version...
Like general philosophy of the approach?
Kind of, yeah. And then 2018 was a little more thorough, had a lot more participation. There were meetings all around the county. And it was pretty much the closest thing to a consensus that we've been able to develop here. So we do have that. And they say zoning and the land use code came out of that master plan.
It sounds like there was a lot that was working in that 2018 process and maybe a lot that we could learn from in, in terms of how to effectively engage the public.
Yeah, yeah, there is. I mean, granted, the land use code itself was implemented during COVID, so, so getting...
The iteration, the follow-up to that?
Right, right. A completely different document.
Wait, was, so the, the very first, there wasn't a land use code before COVID? And the land use code was implemented during COVID?
Right, right. We had a regulation for specific development, which had, apparently was a very onerous process, and it wasn't very clear. But the idea that was, okay, specific development, meaning those high-impact activities that we have, and here's our kind of a process, this is the thing we follow. So part of the reasoning behind needing a land use code was specific development was too arduous of a process. Whereas what I see is the land use code just needs to be a better version of specific development to really, because that's what we need to regulate, is high-impact activities, things that have a big effect on the neighborhood and, you know, potentially the county as a whole.
Explain what you mean by specific development.
That was what it was called, the, the regulation for a specific development. So if you wanted to do any type of industrial activity, you'd go through that process. And from what I understand, working through that process was not always a clear step-by-step sort of checklist affair. It could be very variable in, in its process and outcome. And it didn't, and apparently, you know, some industry or business was looking at Delta County, wanting to come here and then seeing like, oh, I have to go through that. I won't even know if I'll be able to do what I want to do until I get there and try to do it. And then I might be able, then I might be denied, so why bother? I want to have something predictable.
Yeah, yeah. And it might affect a, like, let's say, a developer's decision to do a project here versus somewhere else. Or if they do do it here, it's like, oh, I gotta go through a really unclear and confusing process.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So that was one of the, the problems that the land use code was attempting to, to solve. And I don't think it's quite there yet. So it is, it is hitting some of the points, and we're, we're moving there. But regulation aside, the processes that have gone on, there's been a theme that happens where something is, there's something that comes up, it's applied for, et cetera. A neighborhood meeting gets together, none of the neighbors want it around. And then it goes, it went to the area planning committee. And they, they said, oh, you know, yeah, this isn't quite right for this. And then it goes to the planning commission, they say, mm, yeah. And then it goes to county commissioners, they got approved. So there's been, there's been a series of this sort of event, you know, both, both on the county level and some of the municipalities, where people speak up and say, we don't want this. And...
Like, this, this is weird and inconsistent.
Yeah, yeah. Like, this is, this is not, does not fit in with the character of our town or this particular area, or our agricultural nature right here. And so it's just, that's the disturbing part, where people are brave enough to stand up and speak out. And then those people that we trust with our, our planning visions, and most of these planning commissions are volunteers. You know, at the county level, you, you can get a $50 stipend basically to cover your gas to go to the meeting. But these meetings can be two hours, four hours, six hours. They can last a long time. So these people put in a lot of their own time and energy as volunteers to do this. So if their, their time is spent thoughtfully reviewing something and saying, yeah, this isn't quite appropriate. I think the people who ultimately make the decisions should be listening to them and to the, the people who it will affect.
So where do we start in creating accountability and creating a, a process where the people can feel more represented?
We change the government. We change the commissioners, you know? So...
But like, let's say, let's say you're in there on, on day one and you're ready to get started working on this. What, what would you set about doing to, to start this change?
Well, then I'll, I'll go through the land use code with a red pen and say, hey, here's how we can cut this thing down so it's at least readable, so it's understandable. There's a few, few potential lines of action we can go on that. And one is, one is just cutting it down, just using, taking what we have and editing it down into a more palatable format. A lot of folks would like to scrap it all together and start over. And quite frankly, I'm, I find that idea appealing because we can have a land use code that is grown from the ground up. So the people of Delta County can write a code for Delta County, for the people of Delta County. And that might be, that might be a really fruitful process. But that would involve a lot of people, a lot of people standing up and participating. So, you know, folks, you want something different, you got to stand up. And, and I'm, I'm willing to listen to your voice and, and hear you, but you have to show up too.
Yeah. So, so as a commissioner, you're willing to create channels and outlets for, for people to express what their needs are with regards to the land use code or any other, any other legislative actions, action that is being taken at the county?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I want to truly represent folks and, and do things. If we're going to, you know, enact a, a resolution, an ordinance, a new law, I want to make sure that it's what we need, that what people want. Look at our federal government. Look at the United States code. There are, you know, ridiculous amount of pages. The Internal Revenue Service, I think the last I read was over 73,000 pages of tax code. So it is so easy. And then our state statutes, by the way, we've got what, I mean, I think the last I... So it is so easy. And then our state statutes, by the way, we've got what, I think the last I saw was like twenty six volumes. Granted, that has a lot of annotations in it, but we, as an American people, are very adept at writing new laws. And there are too many of them on too many levels. So I think what we do here on the local level, we should have as simple and as few as possible and have the things that are most necessary. So, yeah, what do people want? You know, if you had the opportunity to write your own laws for your own community, what would you write?
Well, I I would just say there's a lot of different opinions on that. And if you ask ten different people, you might get ten different answers. So it's really a, and and I don't, I don't know, I don't have the answers in terms of like, how do we aggregate what the public interest is?
Right. I think, I mean, it's a kind of a hypothetical question, but but that's where it starts.
We can, we can gather feedback, we can, we can put out surveys, we can ask people who are in specific situations, like, like if you ask the ranchers about a regulation that's going to affect ranchers, right? And you ask the other interests that are involved, like, that's, that's generally a straightforward approach to this. You want to make sure you get the perspectives of the people involved who will be impacted before you take an action.
Yes, and you know, the the master plan, they did that, I want to call it, what, was it the Euclidean process? No, no, this is anything. Anyway, there's a certain way of of presenting questions as if it's a multiple choice thing, but it actually is intended to guide the responses to a predetermined outcome.
Oh, 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 yeah, I know what you're talking about. But well, let's say we take this route of we want to have a simpler code that operates more from principles and is gonna, if I understand correctly, it's going to allow more discretion actually in the in the hands of the people who are interpreting and enforcing that that code. You know, if it's, if it's more general and and principle based, first off, am I understanding that correctly? And and then how do we, how do we navigate in that space? Right? Because people take a certain comfort from having a rule for everything and and having it very clearly defined. And as you mentioned as well, like developers in many ways expect that and benefit from that or or banks, other, you know, a bank is trying to insure a home, so if it's built to a certain standard, the the less risk there is for for them as an investment, the easier it is for them to underwrite that. So those institutions are looking for that, you know, iteration of here's what all the rules are. If if we walk away from that or or like, let's say we move the slider bar to the to the left a little bit towards more more personal autonomy and a principled approach. How do we still balance out the interests of, you know, economic development and?
I think the fundamental factor that's missing from this land use code is the definition of what commercial is. And again, I think that the land use code should be specifically for commercial activities. So that is one thing. I think that the definition was something along the lines of commercial, any activity that is commercial in nature. So it has this circular definition of the word. And that that's the fundamental problem of that is how do we quantify the the activities that are impactful? And it is in a way, it does involve discretion because different areas are, will impact things differently.
When you go back to the subdivision example, like, like, okay, is a, is a lot being separated into fourteen lots of subdivision? Yeah, probably.
Well, technically dividing one lot into two lots is a subdivision because we're subdividing an existing lot.
Right, right. But but then there's a, there's a character that people expect of that when when the law is being defined in a certain way. People are like, okay, they're they're writing, they're writing the laws because they have something in mind. But when you, when you shift out onto the edge of that scenario, again, you run into situations that people wouldn't expect to have fallen under that ruling. And the and the commercial, right, I think this is parallel to the conversation about what does commercial mean? Because, well, when people fall into those edge cases, again, they might not have expected to be impacted by ruling that really wasn't designed for their scenario.
Right, right. So I think the subdivision guidelines belong more in that, okay, well, I'm going to take this property. That's one big thing and I'm going to turn it into a lot of smaller properties. And that's a different situation than folks who have, you know, say, I've got a hundred acres and it's my investment. You know, this is my investment, I don't have any money in the bank, I've got this land. And in my older years, I'd like to carve off a five acre corner here, a five acre corner there. And it's that that situation, which is quite different, because there's still the the bulk of the property is there. And they want to just create some smaller parcels for other people. And that they get tangled up in the same web of regulations and makes it very possible, very difficult.
You've got to put curbs in your subdivision. Well, wait, wait a second. Have you been on my, have you been on my land? Do you have any idea what this looks like?
Yes.
Yeah.
But I, this is a story, an anecdote of a fellow who lives out in the east and west end of the county. I think he has six or seven hundred acres and he has a friend that was a teacher. And and he's retiring and he says, well, hey, I'll I'll give you a, I'll give you five acres, giving it to him. He's giving it to him so the man can build a house to live in for his retirement and not have to have a mortgage and not have to worry about income or anything. But just because this man has been so good to him and he admires and respects him, that I want to give him, give him five acres. And then he had another friend, he was going to give another three acres. Again, the guy's got six hundred acres, he's got almost like a full section of property. And so he he applied for the subdivision to get those two parcels out. And he gave them the map. This is where I'm going to put them. I'm going to put one here and put one here. He thought it out. He thought about like, you know, he knows where the irrigation agated fields are, where the other neighbors are, how how these two new parcels would relate to what's already there. And he receives in the mail, oh, no, all of his neighbors receive in the mail is nineteen pages of various hypothetical possibilities of where these two parcels could be. And one of his neighbors comes over and says, hey, what, you're going to build a house right behind my house? He's like, no, I'm going to put it over here. And so he looks at this. And they spent all this time designing other possible places to put these other than what he chose to do. So like, why do we need that level of bureaucracy for someone to just say, hey, look?
Not only was that an insane waste of time.
Right.
But it actually resulted in something that was misinformation, spreading out to his neighbors.
Right.
About what his intentions actually were.
Yeah. All I had, all they had to do was say, hey, why don't you go tell your neighbors about what you're going to do? Or they just send the actual plat of his intention. So it's.
Well, there's, there's nothing wrong with a process that would have, you know, received his his intention, codified that, recorded that in public record and then shared it with the neighbors, but not when it's changed after the fact, you know?
It would be different if he goes down and says, look, I would like to carve out a couple parts of my property. Can you help me figure out how to do it right? But he didn't. He said, this is what I want to do.
Well, so, I mean, it seems like we need some proper processes in place for scenarios like that.
We do. And in that case, though, he was meeting the necessary criteria. It wasn't producing, producing ag land. You know, he has, he has hay fields all around and those two parts, they were not in getting affected by the irrigation water. So he wasn't taking anything out of production. He thought it out. He thought out how I can do this best. And I think that's fundamentally where I come from is that landowners know their property better than than anybody in the planning department. You know, planners can, yes, they they know things that we don't know and they can see things that we don't necessarily consider. But fundamentally, the people who live on the land know that land the best. And their consideration of what they want to do and how to do it should come first, you know? And and then at the same time, though, we need to be very respectful and cognizant of how our actions affect other people. You know, how things that we do on our private property, what aspects of that are going to go beyond our property line? You know, and sometimes it's just the visual impact of it. I think we should think about that. You know, if you're building something on top of a hill, who's looking at it? How many people are enjoying that hill as it is? It's part of the beautiful view. So it's just something that.
So this is personal responsibility and expecting the landowner to have personal responsibility. And then building a process around, around that assumption. But yes, with checks and balances, so that if they like, are actually disregarding personal responsibility, if they are impeding on others' rights and and that becomes clear, you know, then it's time for the county to step in. Is that fair?
Essentially, essentially, yeah. Because I think, I mean, the more freedom that you have, the more responsibility you inherently have. You know, you're, you're, you have an obligation to be responsible for your choices as a free human being. And, you know, we all want to do what we want. But and most folks that I know anyway, and that I see, they're, the things that they're doing aren't affecting other people. Some people just annoy other people. Some people are easily annoyed. And there also has to be a certain level of tolerance of that.
But what's the, what's the threshold when the government actually needs to step in and do something?
Okay, I mean, the one thing we already have a law for, though, raw sewage, you know? Don't be letting that raw sewage flow across your land into your neighbor's irrigation ditch. That's a good, that's a good threshold to to cross. We have a junk and rubbish ordinance. You know, some, some folks really like to go crazy with it. Some folks, not because of their own volition, but they got regulated out of business from what they were doing in processing junk and now they're left with it. So so that's, you know, that, the the things that people talk to me most about, like when we need a land use code, it's junk and rubbish is is one. Like, there's a junkyard over there. It's like, well, we got a rule about that already, you know? So we have things we can do with that. And then raw sewage is the other one. Apparently, apparently some folks like to poop in water and flush it across the ground instead of into proper facilities. Which in that case, they just need some education or because there's alternatives, there's alternatives to to that. So sometimes regulation is not the answer, but education is. And the other thing that happens a lot.
Well, at some point, you you have to take enforcement action there if that's occurring.
But let's start with education.
But to me, that seems like a kind of a red herring, something that I doubt is happening very often, at least as it's being described.
Right, right. I mean, I would, I would assume not very often. I our code compliance officer, he did show us some pictures of folks who their their septic system failed. And so instead of fixing it because they couldn't afford it, they just dug dug a trench from the side of their house to the neighbor's irrigation ditch so they could keep flushing away.
And, you know, that's, I mean, that's disgusting and inappropriate.
And that's.
But.
Yeah.
Is that, is that happening all over the county?
I don't think so.
It's a crisis we need to be on top of and do something about?
No, no, I know, you know, there's a number of folks who who live, well, campers and similar structures, as it were, simple lives. And they don't have a septic system, but they don't use a flush toilet, you know? They use a composting toilet and incinerating toilet. They have other methods of dealing with their, with their fecal matter. So the people who are doing the raw sewage usually have other issues on top of it. But the third issue that you hear about a lot is like, oh, I've got these people in campers over here causing trouble or their camper exploded, caught on fire, this or that. And it's, the problem is not the camper. The problem is that they're on meth or they're cooking meth. You know, quite often, quite often, that's the thing. I've heard a number of stories of folks who say, we've got these people over here. And every now and then one of their campers catches on fire and that's why. So there's another issue is the the drug problem around here. There's a, there's a big issue with with meth and with fentanyl. Those are problems out in Delta County that, you know, how do we approach that? How are ways that we can help improve our community to not need that? When I, when I look at folks on that, I just wonder like, why are you so unhappy that you need that kind of a drug to make your life better? Or, you know, giving you the perception that you're better. So these are issues that are not addressed by land use code.
And it sounds like you don't want to take a punitive approach to these scenarios. You're you're saying oftentimes a person's in a really bad situation in their life. And to then be further punished, fined or thrown in prison, like, isn't, isn't going to improve the situation with within the overall county. Like, not only will it be hell for that person's life, but it it's questionable whether that's going to improve the overall situation. So so if you're not taking a punitive approach to those situations, what what is your approach?
Well, I mean, punitive action is down the road. But like I said, first.
It's a last resort.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the first step is is education, is is connection, is, okay, well, hey, can we help you? How can we help you change your situation? You know, I'm not.
So you'd be interested in building programs or looking, working with other people in the community, trying to build solutions to actually help the people in those conditions?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, because I was going to say, like, I'm not interested in government getting in people's lives. But in in and in a position of government, we're in a place to lead people to find solutions like that. And there are people who care and, you know, the county budget's already bloated. So I think encouraging, encouraging nonprofits or encouraging other organizations that could develop that sort of thing. Even volunteers, there are folks who have the time and ability to volunteer who might be interested in that. But I think the first step is is education and connecting with those people and finding out what is the root of this problem. Like, why are you, why are you having this situation? And like, do you know how your situation is damaging other people? Do you realize that your actions are having an impact on other people? Maybe they don't even know. Maybe they need to actually be told that they do. And then if it's like, I don't care what you think, I'm going to go, I'm going to go shoot up again or whatever. If that's the case, then, okay, you have to take a different approach. But I I like to approach all people with a naive optimism that everybody is inherently good. And that, given the opportunity, we will make the right choice. So if I can go to my grave being a naive optimist, then.
Also, as you say, there are, there are people who specialize in this, who are starting nonprofits, who are who are already doing, doing their best to deal with the situation at hand. And maybe there's avenues of of just working with those organizations.
Yes, yeah, there's one is uncovering who's already active in this area, who's interested in being active in this area, who wants to help like that. And, you know, I think the hardest part about helping people is connecting with the people who actually need the help and for them being willing to receive it. And I think if we can approach these problems in that sense of let's help them improve their situation. And quite frankly, our county code compliance officer, I've had a number of conversations with him and he certainly sounds like he comes from that place too. It's like, I'm going to have a conversation first, that punitive action comes later. But he does want to help people solve problems and I appreciate that. And I think that's where we need to come from. And and just creating new regulations to solve problems that we have isn't the answer.
That's worth saying too, like, the the attitudes and the approaches of the individuals involved matter a lot. And we cannot solve all problems just with the rules and regulations. It matters what people we've selected to perform these rules.
Yeah, yeah, that's true too. And that's, you know, the same reasons, like, why do we need all these pages? Because, you know, he's told me, I brought the this camper thing, I've been on this thing. I just don't think it's right to regulate what you can live in on your own property. You know, to say, okay, you can only live in this under these conditions. No, I think that's too far. And I I asked him like, so, well, now you have this this regulation and, you know, you can enforce that and these people are in violation. He says, well, you really think I'm going to go out and bother that guy who's living out in the woods? I've got more, I've got bigger problems. Well, I say, what about if you leave and somebody comes in and takes your job and they decide to be a hard ass about things? And they're like, oh, right, I'm going to get these people because that's what door can be opened. It's like, oh, we have a regulation, we have a rule.
Yeah, what about, what about five years from now? What about ten years from now? And that's not really that long in the grand scheme of things for the character of this place to change significantly. One of the other questions I asked one of the planning commission. So there's a lot of people here in Delta County who are living in tents, they're living in yurts. They might might not have the financial capacity to do otherwise. in yurts and they might, might not have the financial capacity to do otherwise. If they're no longer able to live here, where do they go? And he shrugged. So there's really no solution or, or forethought or, you know, plan for, for what happens to those people.
Right. And it's not just those people. I know another gentleman who I've been, have a few conversations with about affordable housing, opportunities and strategies and whatnot. And he tells me a story of this young couple that he's known for, for, for quite a while, but they are, they were born here. Both of them were born, raised here. Their families are from here and they were renting a home and they got a letter from the new landlord and said, hey, I just bought the house. You guys got to leave in a month. And they could not find another place to live. Everything had gotten so expensive that they got priced out of their own hometown. So they called up my friend and said, hey, do you have anything? Can you help us? And he didn't have anything and his heart was broken because that's the situation that we're having. It doesn't matter if you just live in a tent and get kicked out of it. It's also folks who grew up here are priced out of their own hometown. And that's, you know, something we really need to look at and changing a paradigm of how we approach housing.
So one of the things we've talked about is there are natural solutions that form, you know, people build a granny flat or other, you know, housing options on their property. And that's one of the places where, you know, this land use code can have a big impact, what is, what is defined as possible and not possible.
Yeah, the accessory dwelling units, the ADUs they call them, that comes up again and again.
But this is an example of where there's an economic pressure and people are finding a way to solve that pressure and actually meet the needs of other people. And then the government's stepping in and saying, no, you can't do that.
And I think we need to have a, a policy regarding ADUs and whatnot so that landowners and homeowners can create, you know, spaces for, for their children and for their helpers without having burdensome regulations. One of the issues that comes up often in terms of, well, we need to limit these things is because of water, you know, which makes sense. But also not everybody uses water as excessively as a lot of planning documents and codebooks expect. So some folks who live more conservative lifestyles, and I'm not speaking of the political conservatism, I'm talking about actual conservative lifestyles where they don't have to use excessive resources to live, that they have a different way of providing shelter for themselves, for their families, for their helpers than, than people who are used to more conventional type of construction and, you know, more urban suburban style of living.
Yeah. If you have running water and you're connected to the power grid, you're going to use a lot of water and power without ever thinking about it.
This is true.
If you are not connected to the grid and you are not connected to running water, you're going to be very conservative with those resources.
Yeah, yeah. If you have to go, go fill up your water tank and haul it home every, every week or two weeks or whatever, you're going to think about it.
Humanity goes back a long time. We've, we've been living happily and successfully in situations with a lot less resource consumption. So, you know, my, my personal feeling on it is if people want to live in that way or, or that is what's possible, that's with, what's within the realm of possibilities for them, I don't want to see it criminalized. And again, with the caveat of, well, other people's rights are important too. You can't just shovel your poop over the fence or put it in the ditch, right? But, but again, I don't, I don't think that's what's happening in most cases. If it is happening, existing rules and regulations cover that, as you said.
Right, right. There are many alternatives to conventional systems. And I, I think one thing when we're concerned about water, we should really look at, and we're designing new homes, to look at rain catchment systems and supplement, use rain to supplement your, your water supplies. And granted, I'm not totally up to date on the current state laws concerning that. But we, those need to be looked at and that opportunity, both using rainwater as a water source, which would alleviate either the, you know, the need to haul water for one or the need to just use less water from whatever system. And also, also to,
So we could encourage much more intelligent use of resources.
Yes, yes. And at the same time,
We do live in a desert.
We do. Unfortunately, I, I don't like that word. My wife scorns me with that. We're in the desert. Like, no.
Well, it's amount of rainfall. Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, so, so if we can catch the water and just, you know, the storm we had yesterday, that would have filled up with enough roof service, you could have filled up quite a bit of water, which is that one storm. And, and likewise on the other side of it, to incorporate and encourage use of gray water for landscape irrigation and other second uses that,
Or certainly not combining it with the black water, which just creates a large mass of unusable toxic sludge. What do we do with this?
Right. And like here.
Gray water didn't need to be in there.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it helps the poop flow down, down the sewer faster if you've got the gray water in there. But I mean, right now, you know, several of the municipalities around here, I don't know all of the waste treatment plants, but they, especially right here in Panyonia, it goes to a big old lake, goes into two holding ponds. So you flush your toilet and it all goes down and it's just sitting in a, sitting in a pond down by the river.
Okay.
Settling, settling. And then it goes through another pond where it gets polished and then it goes and gets chlorinated.
They have gnomes for that?
What's that?
Are there little gnomes polishing the turds?
No, it's just, I guess it's just what the water does by itself in the second tank. It polishes it, but then it gets chlorinated and then it gets, but then they do another, they do another chemical to remove the soil or the chlorine and then they send it back into the river.
Okay.
So, you know, so that's the process of the municipal sewer is it ends up in the river after hanging around for a while. And I think, you know, and on folks that have, you know, OWTS sort of system, onsite wastewater treatment system, where they're not connected to the grid, where they're on a well or hauling water or whatever, and they have to deal with their own wastewater, then let's get creative on how that can be. And I mean, eliminating black water is definitely the easiest way to reuse the water coming out of your house. That doesn't have to necessarily be wasted, but also separating the two and just having a different approach to things.
And again, I'm assuming your, your approach would start with education and working with existing institutions and, and trying to kind of use the carrot before the stick?
Yeah, yeah. I, again, I, I like to rely on the ingenuity of people. You know, out here, there's a thing you got called farmer engineering, farmer construction, that we build, we got to build when we need it. And you get real creative and there's folks with amazing skills at, at solving problems with hardly anything. And you can build on that. And that doesn't mean you just have makeshift garbage. It, it means you did what you had to do when you had to do it. And, you know, not everything we build is going to last forever. Granted, I mean, how many homes today that are built are going to last a hundred years? You know? There's some that definitely will, but there's a lot, especially ones that go up fast and one right after the other. A hundred years from now, there's garbage in a landfill. So you look at things different when you have to take care of your own problems. And I think encouraging folks to find their own solutions is a better course than to say, you have to put in this $20,000 system or you can't live there. And they're like, I don't need that. Like I don't produce that much wastewater in a month. I don't, I don't understand why you're making me do this, have this requirement on my simple life, so.
So if you had to summarize like your overall approach and, and how it's different from what's being done now, what would you say?
In terms of?
Like your approach as a commissioner and how will, like what influence will you have on the governance there that's different from what is happening now?
Well, one, I don't have all the answers and I'm open to listening to what people have to say. And I'm, you know, part of my upbringing was, I grew up, like I said, in the air force all over the country. So we moved every year to, to a new school, a new town. I learned to make friends quickly. I learned to blend in where I was. I learned to get along with different kinds of people. And that background and then my subsequent life of, of traveling and meeting lots of different people, I'm able to see different sides of a problem. I'm able to meet you where you are and, and try to get a glimpse of your perspective of what you're facing. And I think the solutions aren't always going to be one size fits all. And we can't, any regulation that we have does essentially need to be more general and impact, affect those things that are, are going to have an impact on us. So I mean, my, my approach to governance would be to really listen, to give people my ear and value their voice and not just write them off as wasting my time because we're doing the right thing for you, whether you like it or not, which is what I get from the current, the current commissioners. That's the sense that they, that they have given to us is that they know what's right. They're doing what's right for us, even though it's unpopular and we don't want it, but they're right and we're wrong and you should go because you're wasting my time. And I don't, I don't believe that's an appropriate way to lead. I mean, granted, are they leaders or are they just government?
I don't know. Where can people go to find out more about your campaign?
So my website is wolf24.com and that's wolf with two O's, W O O L F two four dot com. I have a little bit of my, my platform on there, some issues I care about. We're trying to keep that updated for events and whatnot. And it's August right now. We have just under three months till November election. I do plan to do meet and greets throughout the county. We were in Delta on Thursday night at CB's Tavern, met with some nice folks and had some good conversations. And you can check that website. We're also on Facebook. I've got Niko for District Three on Facebook and we're, we're trying to keep people updated on where I'm going to be, where we can meet, where we can talk. But if you want to send me an email, Niko, N I K O at wolf24.com, send me an email. I'd be happy to communicate. And I want to hear what people care about. And I, I've done, we've, we've been out a lot the last couple of months. We did the Delta Fair, Delta Rado Days, I mean, the county fair, Delta Rado Days and Cherry Days. And been spending a lot of time meeting folks and I, we didn't mention it, but I am running as an independent because I, I think local positions like this really should be nonpartisan. I prefer to serve the people rather than a party right now. I mean, I, I, last night I had two, two longtime Democrats and two longtime Trumpers in, in the same room, we were having a conversation and they all know that I support them. You know, what happens on the national stage is what's happening on the national stage. And that's not what's happening here in Delta County. Cause what's fundamentally important to us all, it, it doesn't matter if you're an R or a D or an I, we all care about this land. I, I feel this ground is sacred and I cherish it. I love it. I want to serve it and fight for it. So regardless of political affiliation, you know, tell me what your problem is. I'm going to, I'll do what I can to, to help find a solution.
Well, thank you. I'm, I'm happy that you're running and I, I hope that, you know, this is going to enliven the discussion about what it is we, we want here in the county.
Yes. Well, thank you for your time today, Brandon. It's really nice to chat with you.
Yeah, thanks for being here.